The June 2 meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee on the General Plan Update will now come to order. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on a topic not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we will go to the first item on the agenda. And Ms. Wees, would you like to say something about our procedure here today?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Francisco. Today's meeting is being taped for rebroadcast on Channel 18, City TV. We had a conflict in terms of it being Thursday afternoon, and the Planning Commission meeting is underway at City Hall. So this meeting will be rebroadcast, so if you're watching it, it's a rebroadcast. I can move into the agenda.
Please do.
That's the only preliminary matter. So what we have planned for today is review of the goals and policies and possible implementation actions to be considered for the various sections or elements of the general plan. And just a few preliminary comments. The document that we provided, the version attachment 4A to your April 22 packet, does reflect a number of discussions held here at the ad hoc subcommittee, but not all. It was up until the time we produced the document for that date, so there has been some discussion post that point. Of course, there's still ongoing discussion on some of the key density issues and housing programs. So as we go through this document, I think both staff and the committee will be aware that further direction on some of the policies is yet to be discussed and resolved, both at the committee and at the council. But I would say have your focus and direction on that your conversation here today is these are the items that you would like to review with the council as changes to the proposed general plan. And we will then have the responsibility staff along with you to be able to bring those forward to council and, you know, an explanation of this was important and that's why we changed that and so forth. So with that, we can begin at the beginning with the land use element. I did want to also mention that the next element in the order of your handout here is housing. Because our lead planner on the housing element is at an SB CAG meeting, we'd like to skip over housing this week. We'll be meeting again with you in two weeks. And Ermun Swetek can be here in two weeks. So we'll begin with land use, skip over housing, move into parks, open space, economics, historic, so forth. Also, there's been quite a bit of discussion on circulation. I'm not sure if we would get to that today, but likewise, Mr. Dayton can't be here today, so we would reserve that for in two weeks. I'm not sure how far we'll get in today, but we're prepared to discuss all the other sections.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So in the land use chapter, this or element, this certainly is a section where a lot of the ongoing discussion about the average unit density incentive program, the range of density overlay incentives, the growth management, final numbers, is it 1.5, is it 1.35? Some of those details, once the council gives direction, we'll know how to edit these policies. So what I'm expecting that you may want to be commenting on are things that maybe we haven't discussed so much, because there are a lot of other policy ideas in here that have had a little less discussion. So with that, I just turn to page, what we're calling page 77 of our attachment, which is the first page of the land use element that outlines the bullets for the goals. You will see the one change that was recommended here at the ad hoc subcommittee to include a goal within the land use element itself regarding historic preservation. But other than that, does anyone have comments or questions on the first page?
Before we get to that, I just want to say a couple of things about format. I'd like to keep this as informal as possible, so fellow committee members, if you see something on the page that we're focused on, let's just bring that up. And also, I want to provide time for public comment. And so I'm thinking in order, I don't want to get, I'm going to sort of play this by ear. I don't want to get too far into the document without public comment, so.
Maybe each element.
Maybe even sooner than that, depending on how things go, but at least each element. I will make time for public comment. So with that, any comments on the first page from the committee?
Yes.
Mr. Hodgkiss?
Under public health, I think the previous definition, which was shorter in the previous version of this, was better. And that, in essence, put a period after the word "resources." So it read, "Improve public health through community design and location of resources," period. And the reason I say that is when we get down to affordable, healthy foods, et cetera, I think it's somewhat ambiguous. What some people would call healthy, others wouldn't. What is affordable? We have no power over any of these things, so it just seems to me by putting the period at "resources" we're in better shape. Comments?
Actually, Ms. Wees, I had a question about that item. How common is it in general plans in California today to include issues concerning public health?
Well, your question included the phrase "today." So today, I can tell you that it's becoming more and more common. Five, six years ago, not so much. This is an emerging area of land use planning in collaboration with community health programs and concerns. In terms of the breadth of community health, you will notice in this sentence, we did include, for example, improved air quality. So there are certain things about a healthy community that have traditionally been in general plans. Our current conservation element has a whole section on air quality. But the idea about design, design for communities for active living and things like that, that's more of a new phenomenon.
Well, it's not new to the concept of planning, right? I mean, Central Park was designed to give people opportunities for recreation in crowded cities.
Right.
But you're saying it's new in terms of general planned formulations?
Yeah, be more formally integrated into policy from a planning standpoint. Again, I think that there are other agencies that certainly have this charge and bring about measures for community health, but in the general plan, we haven't so much.
Okay. Thank you.
So are the committee members going to respond?
Mr. White, do you have any questions or comments on the first page?
I don't think it hurts. As Betty said, it's sort of heading in that direction, and as I said, it's something where it's a real.
How do we determine what we call affordable? I mean, we're using something here, let's talk about it.
I guess.
We make a committee.
Subcommittee.
The Subcommittee on Affordable Healthy Food. Wonderful. Can't wait. I guess this is something that we can bring up with the council. I myself, I don't mind mentioning the concept of public health as part of how we look at the general plan. Certainly, you know, I think we've always looked at it. And I don't mind making it explicit. In this particular item, as in some other areas that we'll get to, I do sometimes wonder if we're drilling down a little bit too far into the details. You know, access to affordable, healthy foods, you know, that sounds great in concept, but actually, how the city is going to make that happen is not clear to me. Anyway.
How about if, moving forward, maybe we just show a cross out of the word "affordable." Access to healthy foods and improved air quality.
When we say access to healthy foods, I was asking Grant about this, and he said, "Well, what we're really talking about is farmer's markets there." I said, "Well, great, let's say that." I mean, is that what we're talking about here?
I think it actually, this issue's come up in some communities where the most readily available food source is fast food restaurants, for example. Again, this isn't necessarily our condition here, but so that would be meaningful to people where within so many miles, that's the only option that they have. I think it's also the concept of corner markets. Again, what foods are sold or provided in a corner market is, you know, a private business decision, but that's what my understanding is. Community gardens, farmers markets, and stores, grocery stores within fairly close access to neighborhoods.
Honestly, I think, Mr. Francisco, we're getting too detailed here on a general plan.
It's a goal.
And we say corner store, is, sorry, go ahead.
It's just, it's a goal statement.
So you want to take out?
I was just, just that, I do agree that how do you define affordable and how we are encouraging, farmer's market for some people is not affordable.
That's true.
But I think the concept of physical activity, access to healthy food, and improved air quality are fairly simple concepts.
Okay, okay. Let's stay with that.
On to page 78.
I'll just note that this is definitely one where the land use policy 2 is, it's showing a lot of underlining, and those are sections that, you know, have been changed a couple of times just because of the amounts. So the current, at 1.35, we have discussed here with you all.
Gentlemen, anything to say about this?
I still prefer, I think that the 1.35 is contributing to the jobs housing imbalance, and I think the Planning Commission got it right with the 1.0. I thought taking out the government buildings was a reasonable compromise on that.
So that policy issue will be brought to the council?
Yes.
Even if this language is this way? Okay.
Anything else? Okay, page 79.
Yes, I have something.
All right, Mr. Hodgkiss.
LG 4.2, focus growth, looks to me like this is all MODA stuff, and we kind of agreed to take MODA out. So would it be better to read, "Focus growth, encourage workforce and affordable housing when and where possible," rather than these locations which are basically MODA?
That's a fair question.
LG 4.2, focus growth.
Page 79.
Right in the middle of page 79.
Mr. White?
I just think that we're, if we look at the map, that we're accomplishing this goal. And maybe staff could correct me, but I appreciate that, you know, MODA was a discussion that was had a year ago or whatever, but that today, in fact, where even the experiment and most of the medium-high density even fits this category. So while you're averse to the M-word, I think that we're, we indeed are, you know, that the housing of any density is happening near transit, for example, and near commercial services. So.
Well, you make my point exactly, because when and where possible may very well end up in exactly the places you're talking about, or not. So it leaves it wide open. If we have this definition attached to it, it's not wide open. So that's all I'm saying. When and where appropriate, and as you point out, most of the time it's going to fit this, but maybe not always. That's all I'm saying.
And I asked you to give one instance where what is, anything that's on the table that doesn't fit it.
Well, we're looking.
I don't think there is one.
We're looking 20 years down the line, remember? This is a 20-year plan.
I know, but that's right.
I can't see over the horizon, so, and I don't want to try to. Therefore, I would leave this broader.
I had, I also looked at LG 4.2 and had an idea about it. The first thing I would do is switch the order of those two paragraphs. In other words, start with, "Work with the private sector to support focus growth by conducting a survey of employees in the central business district to determine demographic information pertinent to workforce and affordable housing and transportation patterns of employees." I think that has to come before anything else.
That almost really needs its own number as well.
And that would be fine.
Yeah.
And put it above.
Right.
Put it above that one.
We call that LG 4.1. Okay.
And then, doing that.
I'm assuming no one objects to that. That's a good idea.
You know, doing that, I would say that currently, that first paragraph in LG 4.2, I would generalize the language a bit. I don't have a problem with the overall concept of trying within the general plan to provide opportunities for people to live close to where they work. You know, in principle, you know, there's no problem with that, and it's a good idea. But I think I would generalize the language and make it dependent on LG 4.1, saying, "Based on the information gathered through that survey, incorporate ideas that would encourage workforce and affordable housing within close proximity to the workplace," something like that. That would be my suggestion. But anyway, in any case, I think this LG 4.2, obviously, it's an important issue, and it's something that we need to bring before the full council. And any other?
Yes, LG 4.4.
Okay.
Last sentence is, "And reduce the need for residential parking." What are we talking about there? How do we reduce the need for residential parking?
Let's read the whole sentence.
Sure.
Link mixed-use development with main transit lines, promote active living by encouraging compact, vibrant, walkable places, encourage the use of the bike, and reduce the need for residential parking. So I think those other comments in the statement are explaining how that could reduce the need for parking.
Okay, I just don't see we're going to reduce the need for parking. Those things all look supplemental to me, if I can put it that way. People that ride bikes still have a car, so their parking need is not reduced. It's nice that they have the alternative, same with walking and all that stuff, but I just don't see that as reducing the need for residential parking. So I question the proper use of that. Thoughts?
Also, you know, in looking at this fresh, too, I mean, this is a little bit redundant even of the earlier action.
It is.
And I think we should be clear when we're talking about goals, policies, or possible implementation actions.
Yeah.
This is supposed to be a possible implementation action, saying, "Link mixed-use development with transit lines." So if we keep some of the detail in 4.2, you know, maybe this one is somewhat redundant.
Just take it out?
I'm just putting that out for discussion.
That works for me.
Well, I think we're running into our, one of our sort of fundamental dialogue spots is parking. And some of us think that we can reduce the need for parking, and some of us think we can't. And that's just as.
Well, we're definitely going to get into that discussion, but I'm just saying it doesn't belong here.
Well, this is the land use element, where these goals, policies, and implementation actions are about where the land uses occur in the city and at what densities, and at what kind of mix of land use. So for example, when you were talking earlier about saying affordable housing should be encouraged, you know, those more general statements are in the housing element. But here, in the land use element, if we get to anything specific about where and why and how much, that really is a land use element sort of topic. So some of the broader encouragement of housing and such is, you find those policies in the housing element.
Well, I obviously am worried that when saying reduce the need for residential parking, that means we're going to restrict parking. And I don't think that reduces the need for parking, that just restricts parking.
Well, that's in a different section, actually.
Okay. But you understand what I'm, you understand what I'm saying here, because when we say reduce the need, we don't reduce the need, we just reduce the number of places.
Well, the people on the other side of that argument would disagree with you, but obviously, this is a topic that's going to have to, it's going to need some discussion at the full council.
And I did want to note that, too, that where this whole process is going, we believe, I reviewed with you yesterday the meeting schedule, is that on July 26 and then August 23, we'll get direction from council. We collaboratively will figure out how to present this to them in a way that can cover ground, not as labor intensively.
Exactly.
But then you all know that we're going to have to go back through the document and, you know, get it realigned based on the direction.
Sure. And my hope out of our session here is that we identify some of the issues as we see the general plan now, and highlight those for council, so that we can go over those and make useful recommendations where we can, you know, where we have complete agreement, of course. I had, I had one other quibble. The very last policy there, LG 4.5, capital improvement projects. I really don't think that we want to say that the primary focus of CIP expenditures is going to be new mobility options. That's, to me, that's a little transportation-centric for the general plan, and I think that decisions about capital improvement projects have a much broader context. I just, I feel that this is an inappropriate, inappropriately specific for the general plan. That's my, I don't know what fellow committee members think.
I think it's, again, manifesting the, our varying opinions about where we're going. And the car is kind of the assumed transportation that I would, I don't want to put words in Frank's mouth, but that's where you see this going. And I think that the general plan has, has been attempted to be shaped for the last several years, has really tried to focus on how do we reduce the dependence on the car? And one of the ways is by producing other ways for people to get from here to there.
Yeah, well.
And that's just something that we disagree on.
That's who else, not we disagree on, it's the world at large disagrees on it, so we can't just force our foot in that shoe. But in this particular LG 4.5, I'm wondering, we get into car and bike sharing programs. Seems to me that should be a private sector matter. Is there a particular reason why we think that the government is, or the city is going to be a participant there?
Well, for example, we provide parking garages, public parking garages. So we are in the business of facilitating and helping people park their cars into some limited.
Right, to come downtown to buy stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
So car and bike share programs, again, that can be done in private sector, but the city could also be a partner in some way. And I think that just, you know, it's not saying exactly how that's going to be done.
Well, I don't see, the only place I know that does car programs is like the university, where it's not been a huge success. And the bike share program, most of the bikes went over the border. So I wonder the sagacity of this, those particular terms there. I just don't think it should be part of the general plan. I don't know if somebody else thinks that way.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, and Mr. White, I'm not suggesting that there is a, let me put it this way. What this says is that the focus of all new capital improvement projects shall be on alternative transportation. And that, to me, is a pretty narrow agenda. You can perfectly well agree that promoting alternative transportation is a good thing, without saying that the focus of the city's capital improvement programs from here on out is going to be alternative transportation.
I appreciate the point, and that if we can broaden it to say, you know, to include all modes of transportation, something to that effect, that would, I can work with that, so that we're saying, you know, cars as well as the other things.
Right, right, right. No, I, and that's fine, I'm really trying to get to a more general point here, and, you know, if we don't have agreement, we don't have agreement. But for instance, flood control is an important part of land use policy. You know, improving the Mission Creek channel. There are so many very important capital improvement programs that the city has to deal with. I think focusing it even on transportation as a whole.
I see.
Is too specific.
Okay, and the way I had read this was focusing transportation capital improvement projects. I understand, I understand your point.
Yeah. Because this says all capital improvement projects.
Right, no, I get that.
So if we put in transportation, that might solve the problem here.
Well, two things would be to put in transportation, and then the second one would be to put in, to add the car into there.
You can just say all modes of transportation, whatever.
Okay, right.
You understand, Benny, does that make sense?
I do.
Yeah, and it says on new mobility options, so, and then it says, "E.G., for example, quality transit, bicycle, infrastructure, and maybe just before enhanced pedestrian automobile motorist needs."
And that's interesting, because it says secure parking as one of the ways.
That's referring to bicycles.
That's bicycle, yeah. So I think I've got it.
Okay.
And this will be brought up in general. Okay, thank you.
All right.
One quick comment on LG 3.
Okay.
3.1 is the adaptive management plan.
I'm sorry, 4.3?
3.1.
At the top of the page.
Top of page 79, sorry. When we've discussed this before, there's been an understanding with staff and the council that we're not going to expect a full-fledged program right out the door, and there's interest and direction on starting small and using in-house resources and so forth. So I just mentioned that. I think we might amend the introduction sentence there to reflect this direction that we've had from the council.
How would you amend this?
Say that again.
I don't want to do it on the fly here right now. It's just the concept that it was, "Start the program small, make use of existing data, you know, have, model the program with existing staff resources," I think was what you had said. Things along those lines.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good suggestion, to have that language explicitly in there. That's good. Okay, I think we beat that one to death. Page 80. Comments?
I have a question on LG 5.1, bullet number four, affordable housing downtown for downtown workers. That comes up elsewhere, and it seemed to me a little bit, lack of a better term, self-serving. It was sort of talking about city workers. Do we need that there? I don't know, maybe we do need it, but I, you know, I don't want us to be feathering our own bed. Can you turn that off by any chance?
Downtown workers does not by any means means exclusively city workers.
Well, it's mostly city and county workers, that's the biggest number.
Well, we have all the retail, restaurants, offices.
It's not who's in Casa de las Fuentes right now.
In downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I think this is already, in some respects, city policy.
Yeah, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem with that. I would, however, suggest that we move to the top of this bullet list, just because there's always an implied priority to the things that are first. I would move the rental housing to the top. That's one suggestion. And I'm dubious about bullet number two. I understand the good intentions behind it, but the city has repeatedly tried to come up with schemes to create housing for dedicated, critical workforce. That's typically, we're talking about police, fire, medical personnel, and we have repeatedly failed. So to me, that's one that I think we could leave out without harming anything. If someone comes up with an idea in the future where all of a sudden we can provide housing that is both affordable to and desirable by our police force, for instance, great. But I think we've had sufficient experience with this now to say that that's unlikely. So I would, I would leave it out. The employer-sponsored workforce housing, fine.
Yeah.
That's great. But this idea of coming up with the critical workforce housing, we just, we haven't been able to do it. So personally, I would like to leave out things that we've already, have pretty well shown not to be able to make happen. Anything else on this page? I had a couple of questions. Back up at the top, on LG 4.8, the corner stores, small neighborhood centers, amend the zoning ordinance to enable and ease establishment of limited neighborhoods serving commercial and mixed-use and residential zones. Could you talk a little bit about the detail behind that?
Yes, this has been a land use goal, and it's in the existing land use element as well. But the current, the reality is that the corner stores you see are mostly on residentially zoned property, and they're completely non-conforming.
Right.
And we did a conditional use permit amendment at one time to try to make it a little bit easier for them to continue operation, expand, or, you know, be modified in some way. And. And it's really, really difficult. The one on Mitchell-Terrena and Chino, I think, just off of San Andres, they've just gone through a modification process to make, you know, minor changes, and the code really does not facilitate these stores. People say it, and there's been a little bit of an attempt, but if we really do want these small commercial centers and corner stores, the facilitation would be probably to zone the parcel commercial might be one approach. Another would be to develop the more specific standards than we have now, because it's commercial. It's one parking space per 250 square feet of floor area.
Right.
There's nothing special much in the code for these centers. So, that's what we mean by facilitate. I think amend the zoning ordinance, so have standards that make sense, or just less standards altogether, so that they can just emerge as, you know, a little more organically.
Mm-hmm.
But this is really needed even to preserve the existing ones, because it's hard to stay in business if you come to the city and, well, you're supposed to have double setbacks even.
Right.
Not only is it just the basic zoning, our zoning says double setbacks for commercial and residential.
Right.
So, it's lots of things like that.
Okay.
And how many of them are there, Betty, you know?
Corner stores?
Yeah.
I don't know if, if we have an official count in my head, or, we'd probably do somewhere, but I'm going to guess it's about 10. Some neighborhoods are more than others.
At least 10, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And they have, many of them don't have parking.
Right.
Frank.
No, the ones on, on.
You know, Brownies Market.
That just evolved, the one on the corner of Mitchell-Terrena and Olive, I think it is, or, you know.
Right, right.
I mean, those little places should be protected in some way, or, just so.
Yeah, they're not.
The only thing, the parking they have is curbside parking with, you know, 15 minutes out in front.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I also had a question about the next, next policy, LG 4.1, integration of principles. Integrate the principles for development throughout the general plan, including land use, historic resources, housing, circulation, and public services and safety elements, through the coordinated policies, as well as their implementation measures such as design guidelines and standards. Does that, does that really need to be stated? I mean, that's kind of like.
That's what we're always supposed to do. Yeah. It doesn't need to be stated. That's what we're, we're supposed to do.
Okay. I mean, when you say that, is that some guideline from the state or something, that we're supposed to have a statement like that?
Probably wouldn't hurt to have it. We're supposed to be internally consistent and compatible and all that kinds of stuff.
Okay, well, if that's, if that's the case, that's fine, but maybe we could move this out of land use to some grand overarching area, since that's what we're talking about, right?
Right, and then it would just be a statement somewhere in the introduction.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else on page 80? All right, page 81?
I have one on that.
Okay. Ms. Wiese?
LG, without the number at the top.
Mm-hmm.
We wanted to edit this. There's been questions about, oops, sorry. We wanted to edit this because there's been questions about whether or not we were being consistent or inconsistent by encouraging three-bedroom units while also encouraging smaller units. Also, the 50% idea of an overlay, that would be changed based on what the outcome is. And we also, this is where, in the general plan, we'll reference an exhibit map. The maps that you all have been looking at deciding where the overlays would be, this, this map would say on areas shown on the overlay incentive map, or something like that. So, that one will be substantially amended.
Okay.
And then, just a quick note, LG 7, at the bottom of the page, this would be one that Councilmember Self has had questions about. And I think the word "shall" in the last sentence, saying, "Community benefit land uses are determined by council."
Mm-hmm.
That is true. And it says, "And shall include the following." I think if that just said "may," because I don't think it has to be "shall." So, that is just a staff suggestion, and also to highlight that that's one that Councilmember Self has asked, been looked at.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, I hate to be problematic here, but I, it seems to me we're trying, one of the problems we're trying to solve here is that in the past, this concept of community benefit has been a little vague. And it seems to me that it would be helpful to come up with a definition of it. So, I'm, I personally don't have a problem with the word "shall," if we wanted to say something about, you know, these use, these uses and others, as council may direct. But I think that we need to have some kind of a, a basic definition of what community benefit means.
Maybe the sentence should say, "are determined and defined," because we, we do have a definition of community priority project and of economic development project. And those have come through the council resolution process. And so, this could, this, this policy could be strengthened by adding the word "and defined."
So, give me an example.
Well, we have, we have a community priority definition that would be reviewed by council and either confirmed or modified.
Okay.
Economic, and we would create definitions for green, small, and local business, that on the next page begins to do that. This is, this is the general policy, and then the next page is the possible implementation action. And so, the, the next page has a little more detail on what we think those terms will mean. But by adding "and defined," I think that's actually what we expect to have happen anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Would you kindly read the sentence then, as you're?
Okay. So, community.
Determined and defined by city council?
Yes.
Okay.
And whether or not you want "shall" or "may," whatever.
Keeping a "shall" if we add that?
Sorry, say it again.
Keeping the "shall," but adding the "defined"?
Yeah, the basic idea, sounds good to me, yeah. I also had a question about LG 6.2, high-fire areas, limit new residential development in the high-fire areas by offering incentives and/or an option for property owners to transfer development rights. How, how exactly would this work? I mean, right now, what, what's the problem we're trying to solve here?
Inappropriate hillside development, and, you know, someone has a 10-acre parcel, and the zoning would allow five lots up there. But instead, they, they might agree to build only two homes, and then have a development right that they could sell or transfer to someone downtown, say, for example. So, it's this transfer of development rights concept. And the problem that it's trying to solve is more development in high-fire, you know, areas.
Right, okay.
Although, I, I've got to say that I think the Planning Commission does a pretty good job already of reducing densities in the hillside.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know that it's really essential, but it's a hard, it's a lot of work to get the density reduced to the appropriate for the site, and, and trying to lower the risk. Whereas if you had this program, that's also kind of a carrot versus the rigorous kind of stick review process to reduce people's density.
Is, is there anything in the current code that would prevent some kind of TDR for this?
To answer that, it's more like, there's nothing that makes it permissible.
Okay.
So, the philosophy and code interpretation application is, if it doesn't say you can do it, you can't do it.
Mm-hmm.
So, you need something more permissible.
Okay, fair enough.
If you did that, would you then, if you were a recipient of those rights, be able to develop a parcel that otherwise you would not be able to develop?
No, I think, I think the parcel needs to be developable. It's just that, let's say you own a site, an R2 site somewhere where the density allowed would normally be two units, but you had a deal with somebody from the hillside, and you bought a third unit, you could, you could put it on. It's a concept that we really haven't developed very far. The idea here, this truly is one of those possible things to be considered. I'm not sure how much feasibility or merit it has, but it's been brought up a couple of times.
Okay, thank you.
As an idea, so that's why it's there.
Okay, we're almost halfway through this element, and we've been at this for 45 minutes. So, I would like to give members of the public, if they have any comments on what we've discussed so far, feel free to step to lectern and lecture us.
I'm Paul Hernadi, and unless I specify otherwise, whatever I say today always is based on previous recommendations by the Citizens Planning Association. And we were very much impressed with the notion that improved air quality should be accessible to people. So, I am glad that, that phrase survived your rigorous scrutiny. But I, we detect, previously mentioned already, some discrepancy between the repeatedly expressed intention to improve air quality, and then to simply defy the recommendations by state and county agencies based on a large number of scientific studies, and their number increases every day, of not granting the, the 500-foot buffer from, between freeway and residential major, residential developments, presumably with children, with seniors, and other sensitive receptors. So, when we come to that, I think I will try to speak again. But it was just very interesting that there is some kind of disconnect here. And I think there may be a similar disconnect on page 79, when you left intact this focus notion that, that development should be focused, and among those items is mentioned smaller units and higher density. And Citizens Planning Association was very enthusiastic about the notion of switching from variable density based on, on bedroom count, which led to large units, to residential incentives based on unit size, the average unit size concept. So, we were, from the beginning on, somewhat disturbed by the notion that, under certain circumstances, the general plan would revert back to what we thought was the discredited notion of, of bedroom count as a determining quality, criterion. You may recall that it was discussed by the subcommittee, that perhaps if the triad period does not prove successful for the highest, higher, higher densities, then everything should revert to the status quo, and it was specifically mentioned, namely, variable density based on bedroom count. So, here again, we felt some discrepancy between the intention of achieving smaller units, and at the same time, then having a very plausible possibility that we will revert to the bedroom count. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Nikki Flax. I was, I hadn't seen this before, and I was particularly, I, I think this came from council, but I just do want to comment on it, concerned about the language that changed all the implementation actions to possible implementation actions to be considered if the CRIC don't rise. That's not in there, but that's the implication. It, it seems to me to be saying, "We'll adopt these policies, but we don't really mean them, because we won't necessarily consider any of the actions that are required to implement them." It seems to me that implementation actions in a general plan should be a guide to staff for the preparation of programs and ordinances. If it's, the language is so vague and iffy, what guidance is being provided? Something that is even more cynical than the housing element, which requires not the construction of a single unit, but simply demonstrated zoning capacity. This is even more cynical, as I say, "We'll adopt the policies, but we don't really mean it." I'm urging you to man up, which is the current phrase. Either reject policies that you don't like, or accept the policies and make it possible to put them into action, one or the other. If you don't like a policy, don't say, "The action will be maybe if possible if we consider it." And if you do like a policy, make it possible for the staff to get to work on it and implement it. Specifically, also, LG 5, where you commented on the critical workforce, I want to point out that, that is simply a standard to define the development of community benefit housing. It isn't advocating or saying the city ought to do it. It's simply saying, if a project came along that was for the critical workforce, that would be defined as community benefit housing. And it seems to me that should stay, and there's no reason why that shouldn't be in there. And finally, on the new editing that you're going to do on LG, not numbered, on top of page 81, I think we had, this committee had agreed to go along with limited equity co-ops as part of the definition, and so.
How did we forget that?
That's why I'm here, to remind you. So, that language ought to be included in the new editing. Thank you.
Thank you.
LG 4.2, I don't quite understand what the term "focused growth" means in this item. And I think the, within a quarter mile of frequent transit service and commercials services should be, that phrase should be struck, because are we going out with a ruler and seeing how, whether the workforce housing, the proposed project, is exactly a quarter mile from a bus stop? It's, it's restrictive. And what are we going to do about the transit, our, our local transit that's abandoning bus lines? The, all of Route 22 on the Upper West Side is slated for abandonment, so that's not going to help anything. LG 4.4, what does vibrant mean in this context? LG 4.5, you were talking about, and maybe the word "focus" should be removed, and some other word be substituted, like possibly, or. And then, on LG 7, and then you list all the things, starting there, a whole list of things, which seems practically to be any project that then came along. I guess the only thing would be, that isn't listed there, are condos for out-of-towners, but, so, that, do we need that list there? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the committee. So, Ms. Wiese, just a couple of notes from the comment there. I think we want to incorporate the mention of the limited equity co-ops. And also, what was that last one? Oh, regarding Mr. DeForest's comment on LG 4.2, on the focused growth, I wonder, my fellow committee members, maybe instead of growth, we could be more specific and say new residential construction, or something like that, to make it. This is page 79, LG 4.2. If instead of focused growth, focus new residential construction, or something like that? If instead of focus growth, focus new residential construction, or something like that? Okay. Marching onward, page 82.
I have a general question I want to ask you about.
Okay.
Sort of sprinkled throughout, number of elements are childcare facilities, including here, some of which can say that, you know, new, what, commercial construction should have childcare facilities. So I can see some childcare facilities some places, but not all. So should we need a determination here about really what we mean? I mean, if somebody's building a new office building, the way we have it right now, they're supposed to have childcare facilities in there. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Mr. Hotchkiss, which are you specifically pointing to?
Okay, we're at LG seven point one, point, five points down, five bullets down. Youth development programs and childcare facilities.
Those are an example of a community priority development project. And at present, that has been the case, that square footage has been granted to projects such as the Boys and Girls Club, which is a pretty big facility, also in terms of smaller childcare centers. So I hear your concern about where it occurs elsewhere, but just for this page, it's saying that that's an example of a community priority, where they've come in and been allocated square footage from the city council.
So if somebody wants to have a childcare center, it kind of goes to the top of the pile?
Well, it just depends on the circumstance. Like, again, at a larger facility like the Boys and Girls Club, just the 3,000-square-foot addition that they were provided wasn't enough to accommodate their expanding programs in relationship with a school. That site's a shared site with El Monacito or some grammar school. And so that was granted community priority. Another example may be that, an existing site, again, instead of a 3,000 or 2,000-square-foot center, they would like to build a 2,800-square-foot center. And so they would come to the council and ask, you know, for the extra 800 square feet so that they could design the childcare center to meet the needs.
In association with a school, or something?
Or even a distinct private childcare center. We've seen those examples as well.
Okay. All right, so there are other areas, excuse me, where I do think we need to talk about that, but I understand what you're saying here. Thank you.
Anything else on this page? I do think on LG seven point one, see the green economic development, that's, we need to be much more specific about what that entails. You know, I was thinking this morning, if, I know this wouldn't be allowed for other reasons, but if, for instance, somebody comes along with a new technology for steel mills that allows a steel mill to operate with half the energy that it did before, that would be a good reason for putting it there. So I think we need to, I would like to see this more specific to describe exactly what sort of environmental benefits a business would provide in order to qualify for this category. Okay, if there's nothing else further on that page, on to page 83. Questions, comments? Please.
LG 12.4, that's another council member Self issue.
Okay. 12.4, the community garden audit.
She has a concern about encouraging private development of gardens and whether or not community gardens as a concept belongs here.
I also had a question about that. Just, it's one of those, it's an implementation action that I think would be very, very far down on our list of things to do, but not necessarily harmful. It's just that I think it would come out probably at priority number 831 on the community development tasks list. I did have a question, let's see. On LG 10.4, transportation demand management, including the TDM plan, a provision to encourage inclusion of onsite childcare in development projects as a means of reducing traffic.
Yeah, I have that too.
Could you talk a little bit about the justification there?
I will note, it says encourage, not require. Because I think somewhere else, and I want to look for where it may even have said require in some other policy, I don't want to overlook that. Well, it's just a common practice of employees that have children, and it happens with going to school, too, you know, but not saying have schools on each site, but people go back and forth across town, often during the peak hours, to be able to drop children off at childcare centers and then get to their employment. So this is an idea that we would encourage employers that may be of size or complex to consider inclusion of a childcare center in their project as a means of reducing trips, because the employee would come to one location instead of drive to multiple locations. That's the concept, yeah.
An example of that is the cottage system.
Yeah, they have childcare right there, right.
Sure, sure. And that's fine, but I think we need to make that specific. I mean, I've, when I worked in San Jose, I worked at a facility that had 16,000 employees, and we had childcare centers. That makes perfect sense. But that sort of thing is rather unusual in Santa Barbara. And I would like to include language here that says something about large-scale employers.
And that would really apply for the next, to the next sentence also, which talks about childcare is one of the criteria for project evaluation. Again, that's, we're not saying for everything, but just for large scale. LG 10.5?
Yeah, I think pointing that out there.
I mean, but if, if a small facility proposes childcare, they're going to be getting attaboy points for that, and so...
Right, this is under the idea, again, helping understand what a beneficial project is. So it could be small, medium, or large. And if they want to propose a childcare center, that would be considered a benefit.
Okay. And then I also just had a question here on LG 11.1, live-work, create a live-work land use category, zoning designation, or standards to enable viable live-work opportunities, including standards for home occupations and residential use, blah, blah, blah. I know, I'm trying to remember, which, is it on Gutierrez Street that there's a, there was a live-work sort of loft situation there? And what was, did that get some special dispensation?
Yes, that project was, probably the special dispensation was more related to the affordability restrictions on the project than the live-work component of it. And it was really, it could be live-work, but it was also artist's live-work was the... But what I think this is getting to is, again, we probably already have this somewhere in the general plan. Some policies are being, you know, carried over into the new land use element. We've run into folks with property, let's say, along Haley and different commercial areas, where, again, our codes and our process is not always encouraging for mixed use. You need, you know, and some of them are real meaningful health and safety code separation type things. But sometimes, if we did a code review, we might find some things that are discouraging and come up with ideas that are incentives that wouldn't be harmful. And I'm trying to think of, I just had a handful of examples over the last 10, 15 years of people trying to make a live-work situation, and it didn't go so well. The planning commission has also struggled with this a little bit. It gets into the Measure E, well, what do you count the square footage for? I think he has examples of this, too, where if, and in the future, if we're not doing it based on bedrooms, it won't matter so much. But, you know, someone had a live-work situation, and if it was part of the unit, oh, it was actually a bedroom, should we, it's just a lot of bureaucracy, if you get drift. That's why we're saying here, this is about, create a category zoning designation standards. If we really want to encourage this, it requires a code, a code review, because we say encourage, and then the code's discourage. That's why it's there.
There's one category, which is one which has potential, and it has the potential to get out of hand, is in home occupancies now. If you want to be a, I mean, how many people are running businesses out of their home, but are illegally having their bookkeeper come over to do their bookkeeping? That's against the law. Have a secretary come over and help, against the law. Have a client come over, that's against the law, under the current regulations. Are there situations going forward where that's reasonable? Obviously, you can see it blow out of hand, or you could see it be something that's discreet and compatible with a neighborhood. And in fact, it also takes pressure off of intersections. It does sort of lots of positive things when it comes to traffic circulation, as an example. So that's one area where, and the county has a program where that home occupancies are allowed, that there are, they are regulated, but it's a, you can run certain stuff out of your house and have people come over and do some things in a restricted situation.
Right, and right now, we just turn a blind eye to all that, right?
Right.
Yes and no. If, if, if there, yeah, if there are complaints that someone has a number of employees parking up the street, or, you know, constant delivery trucks, and they're blocking driveways, there can be things that end up resulting in an enforcement case on it, running a business out of a home. But there are, as Mr. White says, many other agencies that have grappled with this issue. We still have, I think, our 1957 version in the code on that one.
Can I go back to LG 10.5, that what Mr. White was saying, well, we want to encourage childcare? I think really what you're saying there, Mr. White, is you'd like to encourage anything that reduces necessary trips. Childcare happens to be, okay, so it just seems to me weird to throw in childcare. It's like, oh, that's the one thing we cite. So would it be, include any trip-producing facility such as childcare? I mean, it could be a grocery store, you don't have to go shopping. I don't know, what would it be? Betty's wincing over there.
Well, I think, I think trip reduction was one of the reasons for including childcare, but I think another reason for including childcare is just there's a need in the community. Again, in the development of this plan, we did hear from a lot of people in the community and a couple different agencies and such that really want to promote childcare just for childcare sake, in meeting that need. So I think the one before it is specifically saying, for transportation reduction, childcare is a good idea. I think this one was perhaps meant just as a general benefit to the community to have childcare.
Okay, thank you. Oh, right.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Wiley.
I wanted to make a small point about how we've actually treated home occupations over the years. The light's on.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it is, it's not quite as black and white or clear, I think. We have, over the years, particularly the city attorney's office, have viewed some home occupations as somewhat pertinent to single-family residential uses, or even duplex uses. For example, an accountant that has a home office, and people occasionally come over to discuss their taxes, that we don't consider that a violation. And there are similar things, lawyers, the same sort of thing, counselors, you know. Yes, it would, so it might be more of a question of intensity. Retailing, for example, you can't retail out of your home. We consider that a commercial use. And we don't see much of that, I haven't seen much of that over there. What we see a lot of is contractors, general contractors, subcontractors with trucks and everything in their front yard, in their driveways, and all the employees showing up. We consider that a commercial use, that's a code enforcement matter. But I just wanted to point out, there's, there's some things we sort of consider, and it's more, you know, if you will, the white-collar professional home office use that we allow, we say that's not a violation.
Really?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Thanks for that clarification. I did have one other question, Ms. Wees, in LG 11, live-work, the definition there. The M1 zone, why is that specifically excluded?
Because residential uses are, new residential uses aren't allowed in the M1 zone. But there are existing residences in the M1. Is that what you're...
Well, that, and also, it seems to me, I don't know how the, how my fellow committee members feel about this, but to the extent that we think that mixed use is valuable, it seems to me if there were owner occupants or craftsman occupants who were interested in living on premises, that that isn't necessarily something we want to discourage. Is there a reason?
Well, currently, the M1 zone, and can you help me find, is there another place for it? I think it's back...
I'll chime in while they're looking. Okay, you're ready.
Just, I think the premise is, is that new residential development is not permitted in the M1, so that's why we called that out.
Well, and the why of it that comes to my mind is that there's a compatibility. If you're encouraging uses with paint, you know, auto paint and noxious materials of some kind, there gets to be a compatibility issue. Then if you get, soon as you get a resident living there, and they're going, you know, we're complaining about a noxious use, that's one side of the equation. The other one is, that struck me as important, is a watch person's quarters is an important useful, it's a eyes-on-the-street kind of thing.
Exactly.
That is useful.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether we have, do we have an exception for, we have had, various jurisdictions have that. I don't recall.
We have a limited exception for one, like, watch person.
Okay.
Although, you know, again, that exception could be struck, and then it's up to consider at that time, you know, whether or not it wants to be, this idea wants to be extended to M1. Because there are existing residences and property that could further be expanded. So I don't think it would be harming anything or inconsistent with any other policy direction to just say, throughout the city.
And then we did, the city did allow the big, the big project on Montecito Street. Isn't that on...
Well, it's a rezone now, that's no longer, it has a...
Okay, but it was M1, right?
Yes.
So that was, you know, a real change that did occur on that project.
Well, and the point I'm making is intuitively, I can understand the reason for not allowing wholesale residential development in M1, that makes sense. Whatever you decide is going to be your M1 zone, you want to be, that's the primary use. But it also makes sense to me that just as you have, you know, Mr. White, you pointed out the idea of a, sort of a guardian or custodial exception, that you also, within this concept of live-work, you might also want to owner occupier, you know. I don't think Mr. Wilson actually wants to live above Wilson Plumbing, but if he did, I think that would be okay. Okay.
I have a question, if I could.
Sure.
Just as a more of explanation, on LG 12.2, create appropriate development guidelines to promote a healthy urban environment in which community health is considered in all land use, circulation, park and recreation decisions. I mean, other than the sort of general Central Park theme, what are we really talking about there?
I have to tell you, I'm not really the expert in this area, but there are, I know that when we went to the Parks and Rec Commission, for example, they really liked this idea. And it says, similar to those of different sustainable issue initiatives and lead standards and things like that. So it's trying to better define, this question that you keep asking about the healthy urban environment.
Right.
These are, this is like, we'll create guidelines so that we know what we mean when we say that. And so I don't know what we mean exactly yet, either. That's why we're saying, create guidelines, to help define that.
That was a little bit of a red flag for me, because I heard in San Francisco that they went to the extent of eliminating elevator stops every other floor, so that people either had to walk up or walk down to get where they wanted to go. And I thought, well, that's a little ridiculous. So I'm just wary of that, so you understand.
We can incorporate policy language against that, Mr. Hotchkiss. Thank you.
And there's a report back to council, so if we were to, we couldn't go too far astray. The next one, LG 12.3, report back to council on what these recommendations would be, of course.
Good.
And what do we decide about community gardens? I think Ms. Self was just... I think Ms. Self was, just across the board, was wondering about that, as am I.
Mr. Chair, I would, I'd submit that if we just look at the city's community garden program, it is a real success. It's extremely popular. I don't, virtually, all of the community gardens are near full subscription and waiting lists and so forth. It's, it's healthy food, it's good fun, it's, lots of good things coming out of it. So it's, it's a good program.
And the ones I'm thinking of in particular are in the Lower East Side, is there, in Low West, is there another one besides those two?
Sure, there's one up on Modoc, for example.
Pilgrim Terrace, yes.
Yeah.
They're building a new one in Ventura on Poli by City Hall.
There's a little.
And that garden is going to be used as a food bank. Instead of individual plots, it's a way the community is growing food for a nonprofit food provider.
I mean, there's even a kind of a mini one that went in with the Artisan Court. There's, you know, there's some, some quote-unquote, I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't tell you this, but there's surplus parking spaces there, that they've actually got some, some little.
Well, I don't know if you read it, but up in Oakland, this has become a major issue where people are growing food and selling it, and then the city came in and said, no, you can't do that. So they're shutting them down. So, these things, I'm just warning you that they look good in some degree, and they, it doesn't always work out that way. And then, of course, there's the problem of growing things that you're not supposed to be growing, but that's a different one.
Well, my, my view on this one is, it does seem like, that's, as I said, that's going to be a relatively low priority for implementation, conducting this audit, but I don't really see a problem with leaving the language in there. Okay, so if we can move on to page 84. Questions or comments?
I have a question on the first one, LG 13.1. We list downtown Coast Village Road, et cetera. Should we want to say, among others, in case there is an area that we have missed, just to keep it open?
We've said, these are areas, these areas include.
Okay.
We haven't said they're limited to these.
But we said these would be a priority.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
This one's been revised with your prior direction, on removing form-based codes and adding community involvement in floor ratios.
Anything else on this page? Okay, page 85.
I have one on 85.
Sure.
Again, parking, automobile parking provided to meet but not exceed demand.
Which are we talking about here?
I'm sorry, LG, just LG.
Okay.
If somebody chose to exceed demand, are they not allowed to do that now? If they wanted to have more parking than what was immediately called for?
Now, there's no limitation on that. This is an idea to amend the zoning ordinance that would establish, this kind of goes along the lines with the maximum.
Right.
Right.
Concept, meaning demand and not exceeding it.
So, but we took away parking maxims?
Right. This is, in this section, I think because of how parking relates to size, bulk, and So that's why we haven't talked, discussed this one before.
Well, in any case, should we just not take out but not exceed and just say, to meet demand?
Well, then we don't, we don't need the policy.
Right. I think we don't need the policy.
Okay.
I mean, based on the fact that, sure, we're establishing limits, what we're trying to do is establish limits on bulk and scale, and we're trying to come up with design guidelines for that. Now, if for some reason someone wants to build a building that's well within those limits and has one dwelling unit and five parking spaces, I guess, I guess they can do that. But the emphasis first on, first and foremost, is the broader design guideline. And I think we've heard majority sentiment on council that we're not interested in parking maxims. Page 86. Any comments?
Clarification if I could. Bottom paragraph, LG 17, it speaks about reducing the community's carbon footprint. Are we talking about anything other than driving here?
Sure. Heating, cooling.
The, the ideas of what could be addressed in a sustainable neighborhood plan include a variety of things, development, materials, open space, paving, water, electrical, energy use, all those kinds of things.
Photovoltaics.
Right. The community garden would reduce the carbon.
How would that work? I mean, all our communities are pretty much, our neighborhoods are pretty much built out already.
Oh, the idea behind the sustainable neighborhood plan is more of enhancement of the existing neighborhoods. There was quite a bit of interest in this concept, even like, for example, I met with the Milpus Association folks, and they thought that this concept could be applied to their neighborhood, or, you know, and adjoining neighborhoods to the commercial corridor of Milpus. So, the Mesa is included in the general plan as an example of a mixed-use neighborhood with the commercial and residential. And these are ideas on how to enhance neighborhoods, not build new neighborhoods or anything like that, but as a neighborhood enhancement.
I think, I think that we can look back on State Street and that it's been built out for over a century, and yet it has been enhanced, particularly in the last 50 or 40 years, by a redesign. And we, now we have the wider sidewalks, we have, you know, all these wonderful things on State Street, which it was fully built out then, it's just better now. And Milpus, you could kind of feel that way with Milpus Corridor.
Right. Well, I'd like to enhance neighborhoods, I'm just not sure using the criteria of a carbon footprint is the way to do it. In some cases, it would, I mean, if you started putting solar panels all over nice tile roofs, I don't think that would be so hot.
Right.
So, would, do you, am I?
I certainly, anything can be done, can be overdone, and at the same time, lots of the tile roofs or parapet roofs, and they have a flat section in the middle where some solar panels can go, but I appreciate, good design is a key piece of everything.
Absolutely.
Looking good as well as doing good.
Got to do that. Okay.
Can we move on? So, page 87. Issues, concerns?
The only thing I was going to say is that all of LG 17.1 looks to me to apply to new development, like if you were, had a new city out in the middle of the desert somewhere or something. And I don't really see how it strictly applies to Santa Barbara, because, sort of stalking from, walking from, starting from scratch here.
Well, my, I looked at this also, and there are things in here that obviously I usually disagree with, including LG 17.1I, traffic calming along walkable and bikeable routes to school. However, I think you could say that pretty much all of these, obviously, adding a new park in a, in an existing neighborhood is not easy, though we do have one recent example of that. I think a lot of these things are, or watershed protection, we've done some of that in existing neighborhoods. I think it's, it's vague in general, but it's, it's okay, I can, I can live with this. Certainly, it's easier to do these things in greenfield development, no doubt about it.
But I think, frankly, Mr. Chair, I think we could look at, I had nearly all of these, if not all of them, and say that, that every one of them has occurred in the last 30 years.
Yeah, I would agree.
In some dollop here or there.
Yeah. So I, again, I, I may have problems with particular implementations, but as a general concept, I don't. Okay, page 88. Any comments here? Okay.
Finished an element.
We finished an element. And on that basis, I would like to, again, open it up to public comment, if there's any comments on the rest of the land use element that we've just covered. Seeing none, or, okay. I spoke too soon.
[inaudible] Chapala fiasco with the huge building heights. I don't think the planning, I think, I mean, certainly, any building heights could be approved by the planning commission, but I think the city council should, of this, any.
This is housing.
Application.
LG 13.4. Page 85.
Two reasons. One, the planning commission, things that go to, the planning commission are not quite as well-publicized as the things that go to city, as items that go to city council. And I think we learned our lesson with Chapala. They're all these, all the buildings were approved by planning commission, it's just when, just when they got built, they were awful. So, please change that. I agree that on this LG parking demand, I definitely think that if the project meets everything, they can have as many parking places as they want, which would, might be useful if people want to have guests or whatever. On page 87, I presume traffic calming means, to my mind, is the nice word for bobout. I thought we, I'm in the group that does that, want bobouts, I think that item I should be admitted. Thank you.
Since the, since item LG 13.4 on 85 was raised as a topic, and we didn't discuss that, if I remember correctly, Ms. Wees, when, this was before council, the idea was that this would be a planning commission decision but appealable to city council, if I remember correctly, when we were discussing this.
Well, all decisions of the planning commission are appealable to city council. But the idea was that the supermajority was needed at planning commission.
Right.
But on an appeal, a simple majority at council could decide the project.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Yeah.
At one time, the idea was that a supermajority would be required at both bodies, and then someone put forth the idea that, that was appropriate for the planning commission, but let's not bring the supermajority to the council.
Yeah, I think Mr. House said that. He said that's going to appear to a developer as an insuperable or insurmountable goal, and therefore, it should be, at the council, it should be just a majority.
I think, too, another description was that was maybe a more of a technical issue that the planning commission needed to be on board, and that if it became a supermajority at council, it would become more of a political issue. I mean, that's what I heard people say. But that's the background on this.
Okay.
It was initially recommended as a, and Mr. Wiley did comment on this, I think, as it was being developed, this whole idea of the supermajority is a little, you know, you don't really want to overuse it necessarily.
Sure.
Planning commission doesn't have it as a standard at all.
Right.
Of course, the council has it with regard to policy and general plan and zoning decisions. So I think, wanted to keep it at that level instead of project review level.
Mm-hmm.
That was the thinking behind it.
Mr. Wiley, did you want to say anything about this?
Well, not necessarily, but.
Then don't.
Only if you have questions, but there's an oddity here that involves the fact that it only takes four members of the council to adopt an ordinance typically. And so, it would be quite odd to have a supermajority, say, reviewing, of the council, reviewing a planning commission decision, when four members of the council could just take one more piece of paper, adopt an ordinance, and overrule that.
Okay.
That would be odd.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Okay. I believe, we're on to open spaces, aren't we?
What page?
Page 104.
I have a correction on this, right from the top. This element is open space and parks and recreation. For some reason, the, when this title page was printed, it dropped off the other part. And we do currently have a parks and recreation, quite outdated, but portion of our general plan isn't. And the idea is that this element would continue to evolve to be both open space and park and recreation element.
Questions or comments? Page 106. Ms. Wees, did you have a comment?
Yes. Ms. Gullardi is pointing out that council member Self, which one?
Just all the open space.
OP2.
Okay.
That policy and then the related.
This is page 105.
105, page 105. I think she was questioning the appropriateness of some of the actions towards developing a variety of ways to support acquisition, maintenance of open space, and new development, redevelopment would contribute commensurate with. Her question about fees, this is the one area, one area that we've talked about, having a new fee program, perhaps. There is a state law that enables, it's called the Quimby Act, that enables agencies to collect, what's it called? It's not a fee.
Mitigation fee.
Yeah, okay, mitigation fee, for certain entitlements of projects of X number of new dwelling units or, or something like that. So we, we were considering that as a possibility.
Okay.
And that's been discussed by both the Parks and Rec Commission and Planning Commission, of course. But she questioned whether or not we wanted, she wanted us to identify where any new fees were being recommended in the plan.
I see.
Don't we sort of do this already?
No.
Don't take into.
We're the only jurisdiction on the South Coast that doesn't.
Say it again.
We're the only jurisdiction in the South Coast that does not.
Does not take in a.
Take in a Quimby Act fee. In other words, every new residential development, new unit, I won't say that. I don't know whether a Quimby Act fee is, is charged for a, if you just build on a single-family lot, it isn't charged, is it? Okay. But if it's a subdivision, you got a lot split, then the new, the additional lots each pay a fee to ward park, to provide more park or.
Somewhere.
More park facilities, somewhere.
Is it a small percent? Do you remember what it is?
It's not, it's a chunk. I mean, I'm going to say five grand was what, I mean, that's probably been a while since I've done it at the county, but let's say 10 years ago, it was five grand.
It's a flat fee?
Yeah, it was per unit, yeah.
Page 106. No questions or comments? Okay, so, on to the economy and fiscal health. We really are going to solve all of the world's problems today. All right. Page 107.
Yeah, I had something I wanted to ask. I mean, in general, I see what, you've got green businesses here, but don't we want something that says that we're really encouraging all businesses to, we don't want to. but don't we want something that says that we're really encouraging all businesses to, we don't want to discourage anybody here?
That's the first, that's the first goal. Encourage a strong economy with diversity of business sizes and types, provide stable long-term revenue base. So, that's the, everyone's policy.
And then if I come in with a quote unquote, what is a green business? How do we determine that?
Well, as we, as we discussed, I think that needs to be better defined. And I think the definition would include that specifics of what kind of benefits are. To probably be a project-by-project determination of whether or not you're a green business.
And they would get some reduction in fees, or how would they do that?
I'm not sure that there's, okay, EF five.
Yeah.
Provide where practical, a green promotional and economic development program to support businesses. So, this is, for example, the Built Green Program that is the Contractors Association, for example. The city does provide support to that program. We've incentivized it as a, you know, a fast track for Plan Check. We're working with them on their plan and their priorities, where we, where we mesh with them. So, that's, in a way, the city participating and encouraging green business, for example.
Fees don't change so much, it's just like position.
I don't see anything here about waiving fees.
Okay.
Okay. Page one oh eight.
Yeah, top of one oh eight, I got.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Provide green education to the community. I don't think it's our responsibility to provide education. So, I don't think that ought to be in there.
I think the city is doing that already in some of the programs, like the Clean Water and Creeks Program. Also, the Water Conservation Program. And again, education and outreach is a big goal of the Built Green Organization, and we help participate in that program.
But what does that cost us? We do mailers sometimes, I know in Water Bill and stuff like that, but.
Well, I think the Parks and Recreation Department's Clean Water and Creeks Program has a substantial budget specifically on education. And that their, their Creeks Committee, Advisory Committee, really gets into the nuts and bolts, and they, it has a substantial budget.
So, all right, but that refer, this talks about green, you're talking about Creeks Clean Water, stuff like that.
Well, green, I think, is a broad definition, and it would encompass clean water.
Perhaps we could say something, perhaps we could make it a little more specific, and say something about providing environmental education to the community in pursuit of, gosh, I'm not exactly sure. But city, things that the city's actually involved in. I mean, environmental education is a rather broad goal. Related to city programs, good, yes.
Like this change, for example, just while, just occurred to me. I don't think we would necessarily put this on the list of things to talk to the council about.
Yeah.
So, if you all readily agree to some of these edits, they're going to kind of go in the small category.
Right.
There's medium, and then there's the large.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think this is one of the smalls. Do we have agreement on that?
Yeah. On EF, what is it, EF six, we talk about minority businesses. Is that not a federal requirement, or are we just echoing that?
This actually is a suggestion that has been edited based on your earlier input. I think it was more extensive at that time, that said such as fee reductions and things like that. And it was decided that we shouldn't, that's almost a reverse discrimination type of thing, or whatever. So, it's now just a very general statement of supporting minority businesses to assist in preserving cultural diversity in the community. I don't really know what that would mean, but.
I don't either, honestly.
I do think that from time to time, there are groups formed, like, for example, there was a group for a long time that really wanted to do a mercado. And there was city council interest in us trying to assist them in doing a mercado. I mean, there could be things like that that come up, but it's a very general vague statement.
I would think that would win support without any kind of, honestly, without any sort of special treatment like that. It just sounds like a great thing to do.
Okay, any other issues on page one oh eight?
Yeah, promote ecotourism. You know, huh? I don't think that's our job. We should promote tourism of all sorts here, including ecotourism.
Is, Ms. Wees, is this a, to what extent, I realize it's City Fund CVB, for instance. Isn't this more along the lines of something that would fall under the Conference and Visitor Bureau purview, rather than ours?
Yes, I think it's not an independent promotion.
Okay.
Many of these economic ideas really are not independent of city programs, but more collaboration type of things. And so, I don't know if we want to, you know, add that.
Well, I would just suggest you say promote all tourism, including, because we really want everyone to come here.
We do have that as the goal. Continue to support tourism and related support services for visitors of Santa Barbara. So, that's, again, the broad goal is established. But I think in many of these, we don't all, we use words like encourage, because we're usually not the one undertaking or support. And this says promote. Maybe that.
Promote's not the right word.
Should change also to support.
Maybe so.
That conveys more that it's not the city promotion, but.
Yeah, it sounds like city's spending money for this. We could say promote wine tourism or something.
Mr. Chair, I think we could have a, for example, Parks and Rec could have bike, like, bike trips as part of its, one of its programs. And frankly, this would kind of get back to our cruise ships, where if we, what if we were able to hook that up with a cruise ship and get some of those folks.
Absolutely.
Because those programs pay.
Any of that stuff, but that's just tourism. I'm just trying to make it broader. They're all welcome, you don't have to ride your bike off the ship to be a participant here, anyway.
But they rent a bike.
Right. I think the general goal of tourism, advancing tourism, is set here in the preamble. I wonder, though, maybe, perhaps we need some language here in the preamble, like perhaps a final bullet item that says, promote all of the above in cooperation with local businesses and nonprofits. Something to make it clear that we're not suggesting that the city itself.
Go into business, yeah.
Right. Okay, if there's nothing more on that page, page one oh nine.
Actually, I do have a question. At EF sixteen, connect college students and employers, says advocate and support a program to link UCSB and Santa Barbara City College graduating students with local employers. That sounds like we want to spend money there. Do we really want to do that? EF sixteen.
Right.
I mean, sure, we want them to be interconnected and all, but I don't think we need to spend money doing that, or we should call out to do that.
I think support could be interpreted as talking.
As talking?
Yes. As well as spending money, if that's what city council decided to do. That sounds like a pretty distant possibility at the moment. Okay. Page one oh nine.
Top of page, again, we're back to child and senior care, EF nineteen. And the key word in here is necessary. Child care and, recognize and promote the provision of child and senior care as a necessary complement of employment. And I'm wondering, is necessary the right, is it necessary for every employer to have these? Because that's the use of that word there.
It doesn't say necessary for all, because the answer would be no, it's not necessary for all. But it is necessary for many employees and employers have a concern about family care issues. And again, it's actually with our commuting workforce, this is, this is a concern. And I can tell you, as a manager of even just, you know, an office of thirty-five people, these issues come up.
Okay, I understand, but they go and get, they find private care, correct? Child care.
Right, right. And we're recognizing and promoting the provision as, this is the economic section, and saying that there's a tie between the availability of childcare, senior care programs, to have a viable economy with business and employee, and a large employee workforce.
How would that affect our ordinances or policies or something?
I think, looking at, you know, where we allow community centers and childcare centers, and in terms of the zoning designations, and again, the standards to create these kind of centers. So, that's, that's the type of thing.
So, I remember seeing when there was a new bus station proposed that had a childcare center in it. Is that the kind of thing you mean?
Right.
Did that have to be there, or was that just a nice thing?
I think it was just a nice thing. And again, depending on if more and more projects want to get LEED certification and things like that, inclusion of childcare centers does give them points towards being, again, trip-reducing type of.
Again, it's their option to get that certification, yeah.
Right. It's just recognizing and promoting, not requiring.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't think this is a dictate. While we're on that, just, that's a complement, not a compliment. There should be an E in there, correct? Okay. So, if there's no other, no other questions or comments on that page, we'll move on. Now, should we, hmm. I wonder if we, should we go through what we've got here on the historic resources element? This is under a great deal of flux at the moment.
Yeah, I wanted to make a preamble to that. And it's one that I've said on this element a number of times. This is a start. This is by no means what the historic resources element would look like when it's fully developed. And we do anticipate an active work effort on the historic resources element. So, I would recommend that you look at these policies with that in mind. That's actually true throughout some of these other chapters that haven't fully been developed into elements, but. And that if there's anything in here that you think shouldn't be, that would kind of be the idea is really what needs to be taken out, because I think a lot of these concepts are going to maybe be developed further. And we know that there'll either be amendments to this, or, you know, new proposal forthcoming at some short-term timeframe.
Right.
But if you don't, if you think there's something in here that shouldn't even be a starter, it's, you know, let's be sure.
That seems, that seems like a good point. Let's start with.
Why a lot of them are underlined and such is because. We have had input on this section pretty regularly, and so, it's going to be continued to be discussed.
Okay. Would you like to step to the microphone?
Oh, excuse me. That you were going to tackle, the, the sort of historic resources section of this attachment four A was not well advertised, and I know a number of people would love to, and I know we're going ahead with our plan. And I think this just ought to be at least agendized, so people, if you want to discuss it before the new committee is formed and comes up with ideas. As you know, I distributed a, a plan, my ideas on the plan. And I just don't think it's appropriate at this, this time. Maybe if you want to agendize it for next, next time, a further meeting, I would happy, then I could get people like Mary Louise Dayson to hear and to talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I didn't think we would be this far today myself. And I'm sure you're happy about that, Ms. Wees. But I wonder if that might not make sense to defer the consideration of the historic resources element to our next meeting. I imagined that today would be taken up with land use and the housing element.
That's fine. I just, I am concerned that if it's put on for the next meeting, that a different expectation of what's happening at this stage would be created. Because I know that in the historic resource community, on the HLC and community groups, there's a great interest to really get in, and we're going to rework this. And this meeting today, or next week, is not the meeting to do that. So, I, it's fine if you would like to carry it over, but in two weeks from now, I just, I think that that would be really unfortunate if you all of a sudden tried to become the work group.
Right.
And already start.
And that was part of, that was part of my original question. I think that, that the formation of this joint committee of the HLC and members of the public, that will be their primary charter. So, I think, let's go ahead with this, and if there, if there's anything here that people specifically want to remove from consideration, let's, let's point that out.
And this committee has discussed it prior, so that's why we've added.
Sure.
The goal statement, that was a recommendation of council member Hotchkiss. We also talked about those interim guidelines on page one one one, that's why that struck. So, this section already reflects some of your earlier comments.
Right.
And I just had one question here, if I could, sir.
Sure.
Anytime I see loan program on a city document, I start to worry. We didn't have very good luck with that recently. On HR one point one. Create a restoration and rehabilitation loan program specific to designated and potential historic structures.
I.
I would love to support all those things, but do we want to get into the loan situation?
I think, personally, my view on that is, is there may be cases where, for particular historic structures that the city deems vital to the character of the city, there might be something where that would be the right way to go. I imagine it would be very targeted, not, you know.
The granada, I mean, the major city investment.
Sure.
In, I think it wasn't a loan.
It was worse.
Yeah, it was a grant.
So I.
Things like that do come up.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's something that would be invoked very often, but. Anything else on page one ten, that people have concerns about? Page one eleven.
I just had a clarification question. At one point, we speak about, don't want to change the microclimate of an affected historic structure. We're just talking about.
Which?
Right in the middle of second, HR four point two. We're just talking about what, microclimate?
That, that was a comment that came from the State Parks, who has, you know, works a lot with Adobe structures.
Right.
And a realization that if there was an area that's currently exposed to sun.
Right.
And then became shaded and changed the microclimate, like along a wall face, that could become, you know, now moldy or something like that.
I see, the fact that it didn't have sunlight or something, that's.
Right, the change in the climate, a fully exposed.
Okay, I'm just not familiar with that as a climate, but I understand.
Right, it was a new idea that we hadn't thought of, and the planning commission liked the idea of adding that.
Any other issues with this? Okay. Another element down. Page one thirteen, environmental resources.
Yes, I had a suggestion, if I could.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss?
This gets into climate change, which we don't really know where that's going. So, I wondered if we could add a sentence here under the goals and saying, or a modification, saying that climate change itself remains, or the effects of climate. saying that climate change itself remains, or the effects of climate change itself remains unknown and suggestions here should be adopted on a wait-and-see basis. In other words, not spending money now on things that may or may not happen, but watching it, monitoring it, et cetera. And that sort of permeates everything in the, that would be in this section.
Could you say that one more time? I'm not quite sure I get it.
I said, I said that I just wanted to, some of this treats climate change as a, it's going to happen or it is happening and we therefore need to do such and such. And my point is, well, we don't know what's really going on and that we should hold off in taking any specific actions until we monitor and see that those are of immediate need.
Okay, I see what you mean. Mr. White, did you have any comments?
I just think this is one of those big, one of the bigs should go before council, Mr. Chair.
I think that's probably true.
We did make some edits to this section based on input from Councilmember Hotchkiss a couple iterations back, actually. So from earlier versions, this has been toned down somewhat. And I, and I know that you all have had communication from the city attorney as well about some of the policy direction and the fact that we're already preparing a climate action plan. So tempering some of the language, I think we made an effort already in some respects to do that. But keeping it strong in areas that we feel we're obligated to do so and really are anticipating council, state, or somebody's going to ask us to do these things.
Related to that, I did have a question about ER 1.1. So the comprehensive climate change action plan, is that a, is that a state requirement? And what form does it take?
It's a state requirement in somewhat of a roundabout way. We included it in the general plan as a means to be able to evaluate our general plan consistent with the state regulations that general plans and general planning EIRs anticipate climate change and include climate action plans as required mitigation. So we kind of pre-mitigated a little bit by putting it in the plan itself. And Barbara Shelton is joining us now. She's just beginning a work program. The city did attain some grant funding to develop a climate action plan. And we're also coordinating with a, a, an effort of an adaptability plan that's being sponsored by a professor from UC Santa Cruz. So it's required, but kind of in a roundabout way. And it's, it's just being initiated right now as a staff effort to prepare the climate action plan.
And so has the State Bureau of Climate Change told us what form this has to take?
Well, there are quite a bit, I'll let Barbara respond further, but there, there are several climate action plans already prepared in the state and nation. And somewhat of a model is, is already emerged and developed, but I don't know that there's specific requirements.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, would you like to enlighten us on this? Thank you.
There's not specific requirements for exactly what the form of the plan needs to do. As, as Ms. Wees said, there are actually quite a few plans that have been developed, initial plans that have been developed, both in this country as well as around the world. And there is, you know, just by, by the ability to look at some other plans, I think we'll be able to, to look at some good examples that might work for us as well. But, I mean, the basic components that we would be looking at, I think we definitely want to try and identify things that the city has already been doing. I mean, we've had the green team in place. There's been a lot of retrofitting of city facilities, so just, and there's just other things that have been happening in the community as a whole. So we want to start from there. Then we, we did do some work as a part of the EIR for Plan Santa Barbara to start looking at a baseline emissions inventory for greenhouse gases. And then, you know, we'll, we'll want to try and refine that a little bit with this, looking at some statewide measures that have gone into place since we did that earlier work that are going to reduce emissions throughout the state. And we want to try and reduce our projected emissions by taking those into account. Then the other sort of two areas of the plan would probably be dealing with, looking at any additional considerations for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And then the other part, looking at adaptation to potential future changes from climate change and monitoring.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments on page 113?
On ER 1.2, require new development, redevelopment, and substantial remodels to demonstrate how the project will support the city in attaining goal requirement AB 32, et cetera. What, this sounds like it could be expensive. How does one do that? If you're developing, coming with the development?
Mr. Chair and council members, subcommittee members, well, this is a very brief type of statement at this point that would need to be further developed. One thing I did notice though, in just looking at this right now, is the, at the very end of it, it's talking about kind of a goal to reduce to 1990 levels by 2030. And I think that should be updated. There's been, and I'll get back to your point as well, but just while I'm thinking about it, the regional work that's been done, at this point, the SB CAG region had worked with California Air Resources Board and identified a goal of maintaining existing levels rather than reducing. So we may want to be reflecting the regional goal in this one. But going back to your question about how would we do this and where would the costs come? I think, you know, as part of the climate action plan, hopefully we'll be taking another look at this as to what would be some mechanisms that have been done in, in a number of these other plans that we might want to consider. Again, this is a measure that's possible items to be considered and we haven't really done the work on this yet to identify all of those details and specifics of it. It's more of a generalized approach to be considered.
Well, if I'm a developer, I look at this, I'm going like, my God, what are they going to ask? That's kind of what I'm thinking practically speaking. How onerous could this be or?
I don't think we would just apply this based on this level of development. It would, there would have to be a new program that tells the city and potential developers or property owners who want to make improvements, what's expected of them. So we, we don't, this, this here as a, as an idea doesn't become active as a requirement immediately. It requires a city program to implement it.
Sure.
And during that process, again, for example, the city in the update of the single-family design guidelines, that process included that for homes over 4,000 square feet, they must be a minimum of a two-star rating in the built green program. Okay? That's a very specific thing that was discussed and approved by council and in a program. So we would need specifics like that in order to implement this.
Chair.
Mr. White.
In at least one other jurisdiction, I've seen a list of LEED requirements put out there without the, the full LEED certification, but just saying, you need to go down the LEED, you need to hit the LEED checklist and do those things in your construction project. Was one approach that, that one jurisdiction took. So I think you're right, though, there's a wide range of, of options that, that could occur. They just, we're just not there yet in terms of coming up with a program.
So if I understand it right, for a house over 4,000 square feet, for the whole house, it's mandatory. If you're 3999, it's optional.
Right, for that particular city standard. And it's not just the house, it's the property and the whole development. Because to meet the two-star rating, which I think may become a three-star rating, but things like amount of permeable or impermeable surfaces, the drought-tolerant landscaping, there are a variety of things that go into attaining a two-star or three-star qualification. So it's the whole development, not just the house.
Okay. Page 114?
Yeah, I have a question at the top.
Okay.
Item C, second one down.
ER 5.1C?
No, above ER 2, number C.
Where, which page are we on?
114.
Okay.
B is deleted, C says, talks about green roofs. Are we, are we talking about color green roofs or other green roofs?
We're talking about roofs that have plants on them in some form or other. It can be where the roof structure itself is, has like a, a growing ground cover, but a green roof is also vegetable gardens and trees on roofs, like within a roof well.
Trees on roofs? I never heard of that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
It provides shading to the top of the building that actually can heat up. It's, it's a different way of insulating the building.
Bizarre criteria, okay.
Anything else on page 114? Page 115. If there are no comments, I'll just keep right on going. Page 116.
Yes, 116 ER 9, where it talks about slowing down cars to permit the wider use of electrical vehicles. Aren't those state standards that we must conform to on our highways?
Actually, I think the city council, it's a legislative platform or something, there's an, an interest in the city having more control over speed limits on local streets. So you're right. I think on certain streets and it, under certain legal parameters, the city has limited ability to regulate, but it's been an ongoing city interest to have greater authority over speeding and allowed speed limits on our local streets. So this is, I don't know where that is. I'm not the expert on the vehicle code and all of that. But this is a new idea that we would perhaps have, you know, certain streets with lower speed limits so that these vehicles would be, you know, more comfortable on that street. Just like how I know when I ride my bike around town, which streets I like to ride on, the ones with bike lanes or even choosing streets without bike lanes, but without less traffic. It's the same kind of concept.
Right, but maybe the city attorney wants to speak to this. I don't think we can overcome state rules and regulations except on private streets, not city streets.
Mr. Wiley.
Well, I think you recall recently, we were looking at altering some speed limits and the question comes up, what's the terminology? The, the survey, we have.
85% rule.
Yeah. And so that's, that's the state law that we deal with. And those are for our own city, local streets, not, not the highways. Of course, the state highways or the, there's another term for the larger streets that have different regulations. So there, our ability to calm or to, to lower the average speed is, as you say, limited by state law.
Yeah, I'm just thinking this is spurious here, but, and we should at least say that when we're in, before council. We may want to, but the state's telling you, forget it.
We'll, we'll need to find out more about that. Okay, anything else? Onto page 117.
Right at the top, second sentence, ER 9.1, "Require the installation of the most commonly used types of electric charging stations in all major new non-residential development and remodels as appropriate." Is this a sort of thinking of like cottage hospital or something?
Well, certainly cottage hospital is the most major project we've had.
Right. The airport, does that?
Right, those would, those would be examples of where this would be.
Are they required now?
No, I think this is the, the type of thing that, I know we say require, but it really, it is more grassroots, community and industry-based response rather than the city being the leader in this respect. But we have met with, like, for example, Edison representatives and they are looking for us to plan for and require these types of things so that, you know, anticipate the coming of greater electrical vehicle fleets and the needs for charging. Perhaps you've heard about this too, you know, looking at whether or not our, our parking lots would be used. I don't know, Barbara, did you? I got a study from UC Davis and they have suggestions on how communities, government agencies and, and community and employers can be planning for more electrical vehicle use. So that's what this is about.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the word require, so I, not sure that's a good idea. And some of this stuff is going to be really expensive. The most advanced charging systems require 480 volts. And that still takes a half hour, an hour to fill up, as it were. So, I mean, we could be looking at big-time expenses here as well as huge drains on the grid.
That's all true. Okay, anything else on page 117? Massive unanimity here. Page 118?
Just a question or explanation. ER 13.3, bullet number one, "Require buildings and other."
That's page?
118.
Okay, sorry, I was behind.
"Require buildings and other elements of the built environment and landscaping to be designed to enhance the wildlife corridor network's habitat." I just, how do we do that? Holes in the side of the building? We just talking about how to have open space for people to land?
Yeah. Well, and, Mr. Chair, I give you an example of, of the setbacks from Mission Creek. Mission Creek is a wildlife corridor. And so to the extent that there's space along Mission Creek where wildlife can move, that's a corridor and development regulation would accommodate that.
Okay, so, but we're talking about require buildings and other, so in other words, buildings along Mission Creek would be affected by that, but are there other wildlife corridors that we have?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yes, there are, there are, you know, wildlife corridors, but obviously we're in a highly urbanized setting for quite a bit of the city.
Right.
But for the areas that are a little more open or that, that function as the wildlife corridors, which are largely along the creeks, it's, it really does, it is a sort of a critical part of maintaining a working habitat. So it's something that just, it's a good policy to sort of keep in mind that when you're designing along these areas, that you would take that into account and see if there are ways that you can, can kind of protect that corridor.
So, okay. Birds can fly pretty much anywhere, but we're talking more like things on the ground?
Sure.
Bunnies.
Bunny rabbits, raccoons, got it.
Okay, if there's nothing else on page 118? Page 119?
Yes, I have a question on ER 18.2, third sentence, I think, second sentence begins with utilize. "Utilize native riparian pallets for Atlanta." Utilize native riparian pallets for landscaping along creeks and prohibit the use of non-native invasive plants. What, what are we, what are we thinking of there? Are we talking about gaucho grass or something?
Arundo.
This is already pretty much a city practice whenever we get the opportunity to review landscape plans and undertake, you know, working with, again, the Creeks Division is really the lead in this, when they go and do creek cleanup days or take on a stretch of creek to do some restoration, that's the goal here, to have native plants and remove the non-natives.
Okay.
It's a very basic.
I always wondered about that term. I asked Cameron, is it, about this, and the definition that I got back was pretty much a wiped-out Franceschi Park.
Oh, the difference, okay. Well, I think it's, right, for Santa Barbara, I remember seeing that email, it had a date to define whether or not something was considered native or not.
It was 1542.
Yeah, but in, in the case of riparian corridors and things like that, it's pretty clear which plants are more suitable in that area and those that, that are the problem plants. And they may have been in the community for a long time, but they were probably introduced, and they're definitely detrimental to the environment.
In what way?
Well, they choke out in a number of ways. Sometimes they choke out and kill the native species, so you can't, they don't coexist very well together. They become the dominant plant type. And by wiping out certain native plants that provide, let's say, good nesting or cover for rodents and lizards and birds and things like that, now there's a different plant. Now, they could adapt and learn how to nest in a, how do you say it, arundo?
Arundo, or eucalyptus is another nasty.
Right, but they're more, their, their evolution has been more to be in certain kinds of bushes, so it really does.
They're happier in the native place.
It has, it has a ripple effect in a lot of biological ways.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, page 120, we're almost to the end here. Comments?
Yeah, I think Ms. Elf would join me on this, on gardener education, ER 20.
And your comment?
Do we want to spend money doing that?
Well, there's a green gardener program, and yes, I think the city is already a partner in that program, so there are some.
Does it cost us money?
City resources are used to support the program. It's probably, you know, more of a staff time and some materials, and it's promoted on city TV as well.
Right.
Down below ER 23, I would just say that food gardens for schools, the school's job and not ours.
Page 121.
So, I'm sorry, I need a clarification here.
Yeah.
When Councilmember Hotchkiss says this would be something for the school to do, and I clarified the education program, are these things that anyone is, you're expecting that we highlight this when this goes back to council?
Well, I would just suggest that it be removed from here because it's not our job, that's all.
I am just thinking ahead about how we're going to help the council move with this.
Sure.
When it occurs to me, I'm asking for clarification.
I tend to, my own, my own feeling on this is, these are things way out at the edge, and the extent to which we help, I mean, we have a fairly minor gardening program right now. This is, this is the sort of thing that, to me, is innocuous. If there's a way, if there's a way that we can work with the school district that helps them out achieving their goals, fine, that's kind of how I look at it. But if, Mr. Hotchkiss, if you want to bring this forward to the full council, that's fine, no objection.
I don't think it should be there, honest to God.
Okay. And page 121.
Yeah, I wanted to ask for clarification on ER 25.3, site-specific coastal analysis. I just didn't understand that whole red underlined thing, if somebody could explain that.
Site-specific coastal analysis.
Again, this is somewhat of a current practice under the Local Coastal Plan and Coastal Act regulations. We do site-by-site specific analysis of the stability of the coastal bluff when people are proposing improvements into their home and such. So the current.
Staff does that, or we have?
Well, we require professional studies, engineering geologists and the like, to give recommendations on the cliff erosion over the period of 75 years or more, as well as any site-specific particular hazards, like that there's a landslide. I mean, there could be, erosion is not the same rate every year, it's, there could be a big episodic situation, so we get quite a bit of information. I'm not sure that this is really saying anything new, given that we do that already. Was this the one that Mr. Norbert Dahl wanted? Okay. So we had a commenter who represents a property owner who owns Bluff Top Property in Santa Barbara, and he was very extensive in his comments and very concerned, and he, it was pretty much negotiated with him that if we put this policy language in there, he felt assured that we weren't going to give some sort of blanket determination on his prop, client's property, that it would be a site-specific study that we would base our conclusions on. And we readily agreed that that policy was fine, so that's where that comes from.
Thank you.
I would say that the wording, the way it's worded is cumbersome. I'm wondering, and I understand if it's just, that's the deal, then that's the deal, rather than putting coastal bluff there first and then going on, would certainly be more consistent with.
Oh, add the word bluff?
No, just, in other words, if it just said ER 25.3, coastal bluffs, and then any mapped illustration, you actually use the term site-specific in line three. It just, it is kind of, it is kind of a bizarre, you know, the first four words just is bizarre.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus. I would like to suggest that since the public services element is extensive and we have about seven minutes left here, that we defer that to our next meeting. I would like to open one last time to public comment on anything that we have discussed so far. If you see a little green light.
No, I do. Thanks again for allowing public comment on what I think is a very important issue. On page 116, concerning air quality policies, I would like to direct attention to the very peculiar way in which this defiance against the state suggested limit of 500 feet from, from US Highway 101 is phrased. The city, on the basis of one study which did not take a lot of local issues into account, such as the parallel running of diesel trains with the 101, also the ocean shipping, which considerably worsens our, our air quality, whether it would not be appropriate to try to actually measure what the situation is like, instead of this rather vague notion of until, this is the underlined part, until the city determines that diesel emission risks can be satisfactorily reduced. Mind you, reduced from the 250, which is already half of what the state recommends and what the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District repeatedly raises in connection with our environmental impact report and so on and so forth, that they don't think that we are on solid ground with this reduction. There is no notion at all that maybe careful monitoring would come up with the notion that, no, we really should have adopted the 500 or 450 rather than the 250. It's just a question whether it can be further reduced. And obviously, if the residential buildings where children spend their nights get situated there, it will be very difficult to, the horses will be out of the stable before some change can be made. So I think that it would really be very, very sensible to say that until we can actually demonstrate that the local conditions do not require the 500-foot setback or buffer from the freeway, go with that and then move back later on. I would just also like to say that the, otherwise, we really unnecessarily expose sensitive receptors to, to serious risk of health hazard. Why not somehow try to have non-residential development in that area, whereas there is nothing wrong with spending a few hours there rather than living in such an area. So I hope that the subcommittee at one point or council will give some serious thought to complying with state and county recommendations rather than do something which later we may get to regret. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, unless there are further comments from committee members or staff?
I have a question.
Maybe a quick recap.
Sure.
I want to just, where are we going to start the next meeting?
Right, yes, that's what I wanted to recap what we've done. So, again, we'll look at the feedback and discussion that you all had. We'll have ideas on how to redraft the language, and we'll be working on a council report to present some of this information. As I mentioned at yesterday's meeting, we're looking to have a certain amount of policy discussed on July 26, and then another set on the 23rd. And I think in both instances, we will want to spend time and outline a little bit more of the big issues, and then have maybe just a listing without a lot of explanation, other, other points considered by the committee or something. I'm just asking for that clarification again here because between now and the 26th of July, we're going to be doing some of this work based on what happened here today. So if, not that I want to go back through it all, but if you want to just, you know, trust that we'll do our best in that regard. But I do also recall that we have a little bit of time between now and July 26. We have the meeting scheduled next week. We don't have another meeting scheduled, but we might want to reach out to you all to see that our communication to council is at least in line with your expectations.
You might want to come back with a report before you go.
Well, and also, and an idea occurred to me based on something you said, Mr. Chair, was that you wanted the council to understand some of your thinking behind these recommendations, and I don't know whether or not you all want to prepare brief statements that could be attachments, for example, to a council report is one way to do that. So, anyway, what we covered today is land use, and I think did a great job, and we also know that there's a lot of issues in here that are big, and so the editing part will follow big direction from the full council. So we covered land use. Next week, next, in two weeks, the next meeting, I think, will begin with housing. Again, I think you want to spend, tackle, you know, spend most of your time on the bigger topics again, and the housing element is fairly substantial in terms of the number of policies. So we'll start with housing next time. I'm not quite clear, I know the member of the public asked that his story be continued to the next meeting, so it could be on, but again, I think we had a common understanding that we're not expecting to spend a lot of time on that, but.
My feeling is that since we're, we already have an action plan going forward with the HLC and a yet-to-be-appointed but soon-to-be-appointed members of the public on that committee, I, I'm comfortable with that.
Because you all already have commented on that.
Yes, we have.
Okay, so housing, then circulation, but again, that's a chapter that's had multiple discussions, both at council and here, but you may want to peruse it just to make sure if there's any additional comments. Public services would be next meeting, and then the recommended mitigation measures is another attachment, it's in a different form, because we were asked by the Planning Commission to look hard at each of these recommended measures as to whether or not they were really necessary to be policy. I think the Planning Commission had a concern about just a lot of good ideas in here, there's always lots of good ideas, but in the end, this, this set of recommended measures from the EIR, were recommended by the Planning Commission to be included in policy, but we haven't done the drafting yet.
Okay.
So that would be also looked at next week, I mean, next meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
And I think we did a great job today, really got through a lot, so.
We just, we just have the one meeting planned on the 16?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I guess at the end of that meeting, we can decide.
If we need another one.
If you need another one, or how we might communicate, perhaps via email or brief telephone conversations on.
The council report.
Review of information, right, for council.
Okay, very good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, meeting adjourned.